Evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We go Appalachian, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting via Zoom. And I'd like to first start off with welcoming Dan, Mike, and Jason and myself, along with Cory and Bob, and everyone else that's joining us this evening via Zoom. So we'll start off first with asking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Dan. Jason? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to second item on the agenda, hearing of the public. Is there any questions that you have right now, Mr. Green? At this point in time for the public? Do you have any emails yet?
No, I don't have any at this point.
Okay. So not at this point, maybe, but maybe later, and we'll address those as they come in. So we'll move on to the personnel consent agenda, agenda. And I'd like to ask any of the board members if they have any questions after they've had a chance to review any of the sections under the personnel consent agenda. Are there any questions at this point in time before we move for a motion?
No.
Okay, then I need a motion for the consent agenda for personnel.
So moved.
Thank you, Jason.
Second.
Second. Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I jumped over last month's meeting minutes. I apologize. So I'm gonna need a motion for the minutes for September twenty eighth. Any questions on the minutes from last month's meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to come back a second and talk about the personnel consent agenda and just congratulate a couple of our teachers that were up for tenure. And congratulations go out to one of our special education teachers. Mr. Christopher, I'm gonna probably move this up, so I apologize ahead of time, but I'll try. Marinich?
Yes.
Okay. Did I? Okay. And one of our phys ed teachers as well, Mr. Andy Race. So congratulations to both of them for reaching tenure this month as well as early in November. So that's wonderful, and that's just awesome. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. The consent agenda for non-personnel matters. Any questions by the board members? I need a motion. Move me on.
Motion. So moved.
Second? I think I heard Mr. Phelps. Michael?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. There is no president's report. So with that being said, we can move on to the superintendent's highlights, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mrs. Gretz. Just wanted to share a few, few highlights tonight, and then I'll get to talking about some goals for this year. So really exciting highlight out of our general music class for Mr. Service. He's gonna have a guest this Thursday and Friday who will talk about the music industry. So it's an OFA grad from two thousand and six named Juan Peña. And he is the audio engineer in New York City. And he did the vocal production of the number one and number two songs on the Hot One Hundred Billboard Chart. So I think that's pretty exciting, real world experience that our, that our kids are gonna be treated with towards the end of the week. So I know that there's several people looking forward to that. So lots of exciting stuff happening in, in the world of general music at the moment. Just a quick update, we did close out the last thought exchange was really just to check in with students, staff, and families of how things are going so far. I think every time we do a thought exchange, we, we learn a little bit of, of things that maybe we need to make adjustments to, or that we need to address from a communication standpoint of where there might be some confusion out there. So we did take the opportunity to do that. We plan to do more thought exchanges. My, I have student meetings that should be set up in the next few weeks with our superintendent's advisory groups. And we're hopeful to be able to expand those groups because we're gonna do those via Zoom or potentially through thought exchange as well. So we can have a live exchange with students to, to get their take on how things are going. At the ten-week point, my goal is to reach out to the community, talk about how the first ten weeks have gone. But we'll do that again in similar to a webinar fashion that we did with the reopening plans, where we can answer questions or concerns and, and really bring them to maybe where we're currently at after ten weeks and some of the adjustments that have been made along the way. And, and also be able to, to answer concerns that folks still have. So you can expect, expect to see that. We are gonna do some pinpointed surveys for staff as well and for students specifically across the board to get feedback from them on how things are going. And, you know, as we've said all along, there's a lot of new to what we're doing and, and nothing's perfect by any means. But it's important that we continue to learn as we go and, and work together and, and make corrections so that we can create the best environment possible for students to be able to learn in. So you can look forward to seeing some of that information. A really important update, which I did update the board previously, probably a week or two ago, is now prior to this school year, the federal government had provided free meals for all students up until January. So President Trump had passed a new order, which now allows all students to receive free lunch and breakfast until the end of June. So that's really a, a nice, nice piece for our students to be able to have access to meals and not have to worry about where to come up with the funding for those meals. And this would be for all students. So we're excited that that's, that's gonna take place.
Wow, that's great.
From a financial update, there's really nothing new at this point coming out of the governor's office. I think as we talked before, it was kind of a, a waiting game to see what's gonna happen after the elections in November. I have been recently sitting in on with some folks, some advocates out of Washington, DC. And one of the things that they're saying is they don't expect any movement from a stimulus plan until probably after January first at the earliest. So we're still kind of in a sit and wait game in terms of how the state's gonna handle things between that timeframe. So far, all things point to that they're gonna continue to make us whole in our aid payments, which they just recently did for the month of September and October. So we're hopeful that, that continues. But it's always good to get a sense of, of, of folks that have their, their boots on the ground and, and are there every day, talking to the different lobbyists about where things are currently at. So wanted to just give a quick update from a financial standpoint there. So we still are in the, in the sit and wait game at the moment, and we should know more in the next couple of months. Last thing, I know that there's, there's been a few things out there regarding testing in schools. And I just want to clarify where the governor has been coming from in his, his recent updates. So those of you that are watching, and I'm sure the board i- is aware as well, there's been some hotspots in different regions across the state, which have been mostly downstate, have been considered the orange and red, which are a little bit more intense. Here in Brum County, right next to us, obviously, they're in the yellow zone, which is the, the warning zone for the increase in the number of COVID cases. We have seen an increase in Tyoka County, so we're kind of watching that closely and, and what that entails. So there's a lot of confusion when these things, these come about from the governor's press conferences is what is this really? You know, is everybody gonna get tested? How are they gonna do that? Are we gonna force kids and staff to be tested? And we've learned more over the last week or so since his press conference that really comes down to if you're a yellow zone, orange, or red. Primarily, yellow is, is really associated to our region. If you're a yellow zone region, which would be primarily in the Binghamton area, it's only if your school building is located in the yellow zone would you be required to complete those testing requirements. So there's still a lot of questions around what those testing requirements look like. I know that some neighboring districts of ours are going through that. There's been a parent permission form that they've used to send home for anybody that would be willing to do the testing at this moment. But there's still a lot of unknowns of, of where things go from that standpoint of when the testing happens. So the requirement is if you're in the yellow zone, that you would, you would test up to twenty percent of your population, whether it be the staff and students, or if you just had staff currently in the building, which I think Binghamton right now is the only district who is currently on remote and has staff in the building. So their requirement would be to test twenty percent of their staff members. It's very tricky from a legal standpoint i- in terms of how to go about that. I think there's been a lot of things that have occurred from COVID where there's a lot of questions about how we venture through that process. So we're thankful we're not one of the first ones to, to have to encounter that. We're kind of learning from our colleagues as we go in other areas of the state of what they're dealing with. So every call that happens at the state level, there seems to be new information or changes from the previous call. So there's always a lot of things up in the air with that. But I just wanted to clarify, we currently are not in a yellow zone. I don't believe we're, we're really anywhere as close to that at this point. But in, in watching how kind of COVID has been happening recently in our region, we're keeping a close eye on it for the future. A last quick update, we have been at about the five-week point where parents and are looking for updates from staff on how their students are doing. And this has been happening weekly as we go in most cases, based on the learning model that we're in right now. But at all building levels, there'll be some five-week reports that'll come out just based on how students are doing so far in the first five weeks. I know at the elementary schools, I, I've witnessed actually staff, they're either putting reports together to go home, detailed reports, or they're, they're making phone calls home to have conversations or a combination of, of both as well. So parents can look for those, those updates to happen. I too wanna congratulate Mr. Marinich and Mr. Race on their tenure tonight. And just quickly, again, on cases, you know, as you're aware, we've had a few cases in our school district over the past few weeks. We've had a few cases in elementary buildings that have required some elementary staff and some students to quarantine under the current model. And as we said before, we're really driven by the county, and the county really takes that process over when there's a, a positive case that's happened. And, and most of you are obviously well aware of, of that system and how that works. We have had a recent case, just recently, we had a, a notification about today in our high school. So we're working through that, fortunately. And I say this fortunately, not to, in, in any positive light, but the student group that was exposed was a group that was in on Friday, so they weren't expected to be here on Monday. And we just got the information today. So fortunately, they weren't in the school building, those students that would have had quarantine and, and our staff as well. So we're working through that. You know, every day is, as we say, is kind of a new adventure in terms of, you know, how trying to staff the buildings and keeping a close eye on, you know, the, the tipping point of how many staff we need to be able to operate on a daily basis. And we're doing, really doing our best to be able to keep moving forward, certainly keep kids and staff safe as possible. But at the same time, try to be able to keep our schools open and running. So every day is a challenge, and, and we're working through that. And, you know, we'll continue to communicate any information that's pertinent out daily associated with cases. So that's really what I have in terms of update. Wanted to talk, next item, and Marcy, if you could pull this up. And I know that I, I've shared these goals over the past couple of months in terms of where we're headed this year and, and goals that, that I'm really focused on and that I'm working, I think, with staff and administration on, to work towards throughout the year. And we have our district goals that we've talked about over the past four years, which are really, really more measurable-based goals in terms of student assessment. And we've really done a tremendous job across the district of either meeting those goals or showing growth within those goals over the past few years.
Cory, Cory, before you go into goals, could I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
About the, the COVID situation. It sounds like Pennsylvania went on the governor's list of those states that will require a person to quarantine if they come from there. If that's the case, what, what will we do with employees who come up from Pennsylvania? Can they be exempt from that, or how does that work?
So, yeah, I believe so. So this is as new to, to me as it is obviously to you. I've heard whispers of that. I haven't heard the official, the official call on that yet, that he's made that move. I think we've, we've all kind of suspected it was coming sooner than later. The initial thing that I've heard from my co- one of my colleagues who sits on the state calls with folks from the governor's office is that there will be some reprieve for those staff members to be allowed to come back and forth to work.
Okay.
So we're working on final details of that and what that looks like. But as far as we know at the moment, that se- seems to be the case.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, that's okay. Absolutely, great question. So I'm sure it's gonna come up more and more, especially if this, if we get public notification over the next few days of this. So we're still gonna work through probably several questions and unknowns in regards to that over, you know, if this does come about, just exactly what that looks like. And it gets very tricky, I think, for many school districts in New York State that have employees or, you know, potentially students of employees who come back and forth over Pennsylvania border. So I have the superintendent goals in front of me. Marcy, were you able to get those?
I'm having trouble sharing them.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll take it through them while she's working on that and, and just talk through those goals. Maybe, actually, maybe I can share them.
Okay.
I can't share it because you're sharing right now. So I, I'll walk you through these goals. So you've seen these before, they're fairly straightforward. And then as, as Marcy works on this, they may pop up. So the goals for two thousand and twenty-one, obviously, I've got six goals here beyond our, our district goals. And I say beyond our district goals because we still don't have notification of any changes really around three through eight testing or Regents exams at the moment. We're still waiting to see what's gonna happen with that. I don't expect we're gonna see any information until probably closer to January, whether one way or another of, of how that will go. So we keep those goals in place, obviously, at the district level with our eyes on the fact that there could still be state assessments. We do not know, we do not know what that might even look like. But I think we have to be prepared just in case there are, there are or there aren't state assessments. And I think that's one of the things that we've been working over the last four years, is try to make sure, regardless of that state assessment, that we have a good handle on, on tracking student data, that we can go into a lot of these state assessments and know how our kids are gonna perform on those assessments long before the assessment actually takes place. So those goals will stay intact. As far as the superintendent goals for this year, obviously, we all know health and safety is the number one priority. It is every year. I think it's heightened even more this year. And we've, we've certainly worked really hard to try to put a tremendous amount of protocols in place to provide safety for students, our staff, and really our entire community when it comes to COVID and, and the guidelines that are involved with that. So number two, which you've heard me talk about a lot, is relationships and connectedness. And I talk to staff about this or update staff about this weekly about the importance of relationships and the port- the importance of us being able to connect with every student and family out there to make sure that they're doing okay and they have what they need to be successful. So we're really focused on that. We feel that's crucial in the success of, of all of our students. That's crucial in the success for staff and, and really our entire school district in, in general. So relationships and connectedness is a real focus for us, and it has been since day one of the implementation of our reopening plan. Number three is communication to all stakeholders. This is something we certainly work on every year to try to improve upon. I think this year even more than ever, the communication to all stakeholders is crucial because we have a lot of stakeholders that are, are virtual or remote at the moment and don't necessarily get all the information maybe, or it gets filtered in a different way as it comes to them. So we're trying to do that. We're using the surveys frequently. We're communicating out via our app and social media sites. Luke McAvoy and Shawna do a tremendous job with a, with a lot of our PR information that goes out. So we've really got a heightened focus there to make sure that we're sharing as much as possible, trying to prepare people for what's coming next and, and answering any questions along the way. So that's certainly a priority item for us, especially during a time of a pandemic. The fourth thing is really, again, enhancing our student achievement data collection. So we do a lot of data collection and have done a lot of data collection over the past several years. And it's really great information for us to know exactly where kids are at, what we need to do to move them forward. I think some of the challenges this year are gonna be, how do we get creative to collect student pertinent student data with students that are in in-person hybrid and virtual models? So we've got to look at different options there of how we're gonna go about to continue to collect and analyze that student achievement data as we move forward. And I really think this is, this is something that we've gotta be very good at in, in time. I think it's gonna take some time, but we've got to improve this process as we go because I think some of these things that we're currently doing are, are gonna stick around for a while. Number five, the focus on our essential foundational standards and skills. And this is really, this is the second year of this work. Our staff did a tremendous job of putting together some primary essential skills for all students from pre-K through twelve. So it was really a, it was a group effort to come up with what we felt were the most essential skills that kids needed to have and would be the foundational skills for the work that we do across the entire district. So we've really been honed in on those skills specifically since March when COVID came about. So we've really focused on those skills that are really at the forefront of the work that we're trying to do. We're trying to simplify and narrow down the curriculum, standards, and skills for our students and for our staff and, and focus on the most essential. And then lastly, which is really the most, to me, one of the most important pieces, as we continue to move forward, you know, I'm, I'm on a lot of different committees and involved with colleagues across the entire country and, and different groups. And one of the, the topics that keeps coming up is this whole concept about, you know, where we're at in terms of virtual learning, hybrid learning, and in-person learning. And the whole concept really are kind of around the genie in the bottle. Well, I think the genie's out of the bottle right now, that some of these models work really well for certain students. Some of them don't work very well for students, certain students. But what we've seen is a mix of some students who are very successful in a remote learning or a hybrid learning model based on their own personal needs, and some that that doesn't fit for, some that need in-person learning. So I really think we have to be prepared and thinking forward that there's a potential that these, these types of learning models could stick around in the future for quite some time, if not forever. So part of that, our process of as we're continuing our reopening plans into the first five weeks of the year, really start to dig in and think about building a comprehensive, flexible, and innovative twenty-first century models of learning through in-person hybrid or remote learning, and really what that, what that's gonna potentially look like in the future moving forward. So I think we have to prepare ourselves for that, the likelihood of us going backwards to the traditional learning setting. Not that there won't be in-person learning options, but I believe there's gonna be other options moving forward. And I think we have to be prepared for that. So I know as, myself as a superintendent, these will be conversations, certainly with the board that we will have to continue on, these will be conversations with administration and with staff and thinking how we're gonna move forward in the future. I'm more of the mindset, let's be proactive and try to get out ahead of it as opposed to wait, await and see. So I think there's some real learning that will happen currently that, that we're going through right now. And there's, there's plenty of opportunity for growth as well. So I'm really, I'm kind of excited about that. I think it's, as we've talked about before, there's a little opportunity here in, in all this and what we're dealing with. And it's really how we go about trying to take advantage of the opportunity to, to improve and try to meet the needs of all students and, and meet students where they're at in their comfort zone. So those are really the primary six goals from my standpoint that will be focus areas for this school year. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? These will be things we'll be working on, you know, behind the scenes. You know, we'll, we'll continue to do that and, and we'll continue to report out to you as well as to how things are going and, and the feedback that we're getting from different stakeholders so as we move through this process. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, well, that brings us to public com- comment section again.
Yeah, let me pull that up quick. Sorry, I have like ten windows open right now.
Okay.
I had no, no comments.
No comments at this time?
No comments.
Okay. And if any come in, you generally address those and move them out.
Yep, we use, we will respond back to those comments.
Okay. All right, moving on to, to section nine of the agenda. For district business, we have a guest on Zoom, Cory?
No, so this is, no, this is just the update from Lee Antini. This is a resolution that the IDA took action on to extend our central New York oil and gas pilot until March. So as you, you're well aware, we've been talking about it for, for quite a few years now. This is the largest pilot, largest taxpayer in our school district. And as we've talked about before and how the tax cap works, if central New York oil and gas were to come off of the tax cap and go into the rolls, which we just essentially saw in a correction error previously, and what that, what that could potentially do to our rolls and the percentage. So it would give an inflated percentage of roughly seventeen and a half percent if they were to come off of that rolls. And this is really a formula issue when it comes to the tax cap. Has nothing to do with the dollars and cents going from, from the pilot rolls to the assessed, assessed value rolls. So what we've been working on behind the scenes, and Lee Antini is, is leading this with the county, the school district, with Cresswood Pilot. They're, they're working on an opportunity to extend this pilot or to create a new pilot potentially. So there's one really large pilot that is roughly eighty-seven million. And then there's another six, six property pilots that equal roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. So they're working on an opportunity to maybe bring off of the, the six or seven small ones and then keep the large pilot on, on a pilot for the next potentially a few years. So hopefully, we don't have to revisit this every year. It may be extended a few years. And again, this is just, this is a, this is the formula issue from the state around the tax cap that still is not being addressed at the state level and is very harmful to school districts that have extremely large pilots and when they come off of the tax cap and go to the regular tax rolls. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. This is just a resolution to approve that extension.
So we, do we need to adopt the resolution?
Yeah, you just, you just need to approve, really.
Just approve it? Okay. So I, we need a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, so I.
So moved.
Okay, Jason, a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Which brings us to, I don't think there's any committee reports.
Committee reports tonight.
Okay. Then I need, I guess for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Dan. Second?